Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Schuess Replanting Board to order. First item on the agenda this evening is to review and approve the minutes. We have minutes from November 6, 2025. Everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Next, review and sign bills. I don't think we have any bills this evening.
None this evening?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is board member comments. Matt, anything?
The third hearing down?
Mm-hmm.
That is the back of my neighborhood. Should I recuse myself from that?
So the 308?
Yeah, the Boston Turnpike one.
Yeah, so you would have to recuse from that?
Okay.
If you're in a butter. Yeah.
I'm not in a butter. I'm just, I'm on the other side of the neighborhood. I just wanted to double check, make sure.
We can verify it's the 300 feet or in a butter, two in a butter, so we can double check that.
Okay.
Do you know any comments this evening?
No comments.
Herna?
No comments, chief.
Steve?
No comments.
Jim?
No comments.
All right. Next, staff report.
Thank you. So I just wanted to highlight, we had the community forum for the townwide economic plan. We had a number of the public come out and engage with us, do some mapping exercise and conversation around the economic opportunities in town. Especially, we're focusing along the economic corridors, Route 9, Route 20, and 140. We had a robust conversation about a lot of things. And, you know, you may have seen some of the social media posts where we're putting kind of what we heard out there. Obviously, there was a lot more discussion than what's included in those posts, but our consultant is working to correlate that and the data that they collected into actionable items that we'll then review and finalize and get that out. So we're still, still working on all of that with the consultant. In addition, we do have a survey that's available on our webpage that is still active, so just encouraging people to go to that. We've seen pretty robust engagement on that survey as well. And so, you know, we're going to keep that live. We'll also be putting out an additional survey. We understand some people have had some issues with the formatting of it. The consultant was trying a new service that's kind of map, drop pins and comments, but some of the mobile users had some issues with it. So we'll do a traditional style survey as well to make sure that we're capturing lots of discussion from the community. So thank you for those who have been participating, and I just wanted to put that plug out there as well. So thank you.
That's great. Anything else? Okay, wonderful. Next is for meetings and hearings. The first item on the agenda tonight is proposed modification of a definitive subdivision. This would be a new public hearing. Do we have to read the legal notice even though it's going?
No, we do have a request to continue, so I'd ask that we would hold off on that until the next meeting.
Okay, so no action. We don't even need to vote to continue, right? Because it's not?
We do have to vote to continue, yes.
Okay, my apologies. All right, is there a motion to continue the public hearing for Zero Greenbrier Drive?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is proposed common driveway special permit. This is a continued public hearing for 33 and 35 Redland Road. This has also requested a continuance this evening. Is there a motion to continue this, this hearing to the next meeting?
I'm more that we continue the public hearing for 33, 35 Redland Road through January 8, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I have it. Excellent. Next item on the agenda, proposed mixed-use development site plan approval and special permit. This is for 308 and 312 Boston Turnpike. This is a continued public hearing? Good evening.
Good evening, head of chair, members of the board. For the record, again, my name is Richard Ricker. I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue. I'm here on behalf of Prestige Property Development. I'm here with the two principals of Prestige, Hameed Hatami on my far right and Aiman Abdel-Jabbar, directly to my right. Also with us is John Grenier to discuss the engineering. And also with us is Matt Armenti, our newly mentored lawyer who just passed the bar and-
Congratulations.
And got sworn in, so.
My condolences.
As you know, this is our third time in front of you. My, my second time, this is the third time for this particular development. And each time, I would suggest to you respectfully, we've come back after listening to comments and come back with changes which we hope that you will find acceptable. Previous changes were a reduction, as you recall, from 49 units to 40. There was a change in the commercial aspect of the project, bringing, taking it out of older buildings and building a new building that was 3,750 square feet. We changed the curb cuts on the property from three to two, two to one. So now there is one curb cut. That remains the same. Based on the last meeting, I am pleased to tell you that we have again reduced the unit count to 18 per building for a total of 36 units. The building sizes have been reduced by height of a few feet, but most notably by length, 25 feet. Each building has been taken off, 25 feet of each building, so it's been, it's been lessened. The, if you look at the plans, the commercial building has been changed rather dramatically. It's been increased in size to 5,625 square feet. And we have, in addition to that, John will talk more about this as the plan gets up on, on the board. But in addition to that, we've taken some of the parking and we're asking to reserve some parking spaces in order to do less pavement and also to use it for screening. We have taken some parking spaces along the Gordon Road side of the property and placed trees in them in various view sheds from properties on Gordon Road. And John can further detail that when the plan comes up. We've cleaned up the traffic flow, and John can further discuss that. And I've asked him to be prepared to talk more in depth about the traffic study in light of the comments at the last meeting as well. So we respectfully suggest to you that the ratios of this project are now better than some of the projects that have been previously approved. And I would suggest to you, these gentlemen have come a long way to, to try to address the concerns that have been raised. I think, to Mr. Fitzgerald's comments the last time, I, I think you've got more affordable housing here. You've got more market rate housing as well, and that's a benefit to the community in light of everything we read. We are increasing the tax base, both commercially and residentially. There is, we're also bringing some substantial permit fees to the table with a project like this. So there are improvements, there are some benefits, and I think that is in line with what the bylaw is requiring and requesting. So with that, maybe John can, can run through the changes in the plan.
Yeah, so to add on to what Richard just spoke of, the, as you know, when this was in the last set of plans too, we have one access into the site off of Route 9, so we're consolidating three curb cuts into one common curb cut for access into the bulk of the site. The size of the buildings have been reduced, so now it's two 18-unit buildings. It's a mix of one and two-bedroom units, there's no three-bedroom units. The size of the retail, it's a 75 by 75 retail building. And the reason, and I think Aiman can speak to this as well, is that will be suited for three smaller tenants. As a try, and we can get three smaller tenants, and again, Aiman can speak to this. They've talked to some potential tenants for this space. To have three smaller, in terms of leaseability, having three smaller tenants is good as opposed to trying to rely on one larger tenant. And there does seem, because of the location, it's on Route 9, there's good visibility. They are getting some strong demand from talking to some potential tenants. So we also, and again, this was on the last set, we pulled the program a little bit to the east. So originally, we, we are having a six-foot fence that is going to extend all along the westerly boundary as well as along the southerly boundary. We do have an option, because on one of the abutters, the, the fencing would split down the middle of his lot. So, and we put, we clouded that on the, on the plan to show that we are also willing to extend that fencing so it would be one consistent fence along his borderline, along his rear property line. And by pulling the program a little further to the east, we can provide a solid landscape buffer in addition to the fence all along this westerly side. And again, that's going to extend all the way down to the southerly property line and also extend all along the southerly portion of the, the property as well. As far as parking layout, we did also modify that so that we could provide a few landscape islands along that westerly stretch of our property. And we located these so that the, the view corridor from some of the abutters, that landscape islands with trees would also be along their view corridor, looking, you know, they're looking up. So that would also provide some additional screening vertically with those islands. With this parking program, we have a total of 90, is it 90?
90?
90 parking spaces total for both the retail and the apartments. A total of 77 are required, so we have more than enough. We are, as Richard stated, looking to, of those 90, not pave four of those spaces that's adjacent to the, the abutter to the west. The reason for that is it provides us the ability, that side of the building may not be as attractive as it could be of, of that commercial building, so that allows us to do some additional screening over there and make the entranceway a little more attractive by having a little bit more green space. And we do have the ability, like I said, to, to add those four spaces later if they were necessary. But whereas we exceed the required parking, we don't know that we would need them right away. In terms of peak, so with the 90 parking spaces, with the required parking under the zoning, we exceed what is required for both the retail and the residential, as I stated. In terms of peak, if you look at the peak hours under the, the ITE regulations or guidelines, for a building of this size for a retail type use, the, it would be 2.25 parking spaces during the peak. That's the overall peak. So that would come to about 15 spaces, which that is what we are providing in this area right here. So during a peak hour for the retail component, that would fill up this, this portion, which is obviously just adjacent to the retail. With that said, when it's evening and the retail is not, is in high demand, that provides even more overnight parking, overflow parking for the residential component of this. So they have enough with the 77. That would provide them with even more overflow parking in the evening when that would be at its highest demand. In terms of, this is being reviewed by Graves Engineering, as you know. The, all of our drainage was subsurface. With the switch of the drive, the entrance drive from being here to being here, we just ended up swapping and reconfiguring the underground subsurface drainage grid. Same principles, same layout, you know, in terms of keeping it underneath the parking areas. So that keeps all of the drainage recharging into the ground. We don't anticipate any issues with that. It's, it was just merely rearranging some of the subsurface drainage. In terms of amenities, we do have on the easterly side an amenity area so that they can have maybe some grilling stations, some outdoor patio areas. We have walkways that all connect so that that can be all available to all of the site, all of the, the residential. We have bike racks located here tucked in so that should residents want to have bicycles so that they can get access over, whether it's up and down Route 9, good luck, or go across the street. We do have the availability of that. We have the, that as another amenity. So overall, what we understood from both your board and the input from the residents and the abutters is we want to be self-contained. We, as you know, we removed any, any component that would have walking trails so people would cut through. We are completely isolating ourselves with fencing and screening on the southerly and westerly portion. We beefed up some of the interior landscape so that we can provide some good additional screening that would be a benefit, not only to the development but to the abutting properties. Is there anything big I missed? Do you want to speak, Aiman, about some of your conversations with some, any potential future tenants?
Sure thing. Aiman Abdel-Jabbar, trustee of Prestige Property Development. So just to kind of echo some of John's remarks, we thought hard about the comment that Mr. Fitzgerald made about checking boxes. Went back to the drawing board and we reached out to some potential tenants and we heard what they were looking for loud and clear. And they, they have certain footprints in which they're looking to occupy. So rather than have one very large commercial space, we broke it into three modest, more rentable spaces. And we are in negotiations with a few potential tenants, one of them being a national cellphone service provider. They are no longer looking for those 5,000 and 6,000 square foot buildings because the majority of their sales are online. They, they are pretty serious, but they're waiting to see how the signage would play out through the ZBA because they're big on, on branding, but they absolutely love the site, the connectivity to the, to the residential and the visibility off of Route 9 because as the bylaw states, the commercial is really pushed close to that Route 9 corridor.
I would also, if I could, just add that you can see from the elevations that the commercial building, front and back, are basically identical. No? So there's a reason for that. We want it to be attractive on both sides. The Route 9 side as well as the, the parking lot side. So there'll be entrances on both ends of the building. That's your, that's your front and your rear elevation right there.
One other thing I'd like to add in, I, I understand that there was a question or concern about the, the adequacy of having one dumpster pad location right here. This area will be able to provide two 10-yard dumpsters. One would be for trash, the other one would be for recycling. And we've, we've done a number of developments about this size, some a little bit bigger. The way from, it's sized from the trash hauler is that they go by a per-bedroom basis. So we have another project that's actually built and it's, it's fully occupied right now. That other development, that's similar, it's a little bit bigger than this, it's about 20% bigger. That has a total of 72 beds, and that project, again, has one 10-yard dumpster for trash, one 10-yard dumpster for recycling. And the schedule on that is they swap those out or, or empty those once a week. So one for the trash, one for the recycling. With the mix of one and two-bedroom units on here, we have a total of 60 total bedrooms with this project, so it's 20% less. So with the 20% less on the residential, but a little bit of a bump up with the, with the retail, we would understand that from the trash hauler, that two 10-yard dumpsters in this area that's adequately sized for the two 10-yard dumpsters, that would be good to be swapped out once a week. When you get into the holiday season, you get, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, more trash is obviously, people are, you know, people are home more, there's more trash being, being produced. They would probably bump that. Instead of once a week, they might go to once, well, I don't know that they would go twice a week, but maybe once every five days. So like on a Monday morning, they would have, they would go and empty it after the end of the weekend. So they would bump it up during the holiday season, but for the overall majority of, of the year, it would be once a week and that would be, what we have there is suitable for that, for that side.
With that, if you have any questions?
Bring it up to board member question or comments?
The infrastructure, any issues with that at all? Water and sewer?
No, there's, obviously, this was a previously developed site. There is sewer that comes into the site off of the rear. There's a, an access and sewer easement that, that comes through here. So there is an existing, and we know it's there because when we were out digging test pits-
Is that private or?
Yeah, it's a sewer service, and it's a large, that was a-
Ten inch.
It's a 10-inch, 10-inch sewer line that comes into the property. And we noted on that that we would scope that line, make sure, it's an older line to make sure that it's, it's, you know, in good shape. If it weren't, we'd replace it, but we would scope that. But there's a 10-inch line that comes into the site. There was also, for the, there's, that, the existing building that's here, at one point, there was a, a, a pit that received the sewer. We went into the basement, explored that. That was cut. There is a service connection that comes through. There's a sewer line that comes across the frontage and then, actually, it comes across the frontage and then it goes, I think, cross-country and then ties into Gordon Road. And obviously, there's water that comes into the site as well, so.
Is the water from Route 9?
The water is from Route 9. The water's from Route 9. There is sewer here. It's, it's shallow. I don't know that it would, it would function. We have much better sewer access through the back, and that's going to tie into the buildings and the, and the retail. And the water, like I said, comes in off of, off of the frontage on Route 9. And then all the-
What size are you proposing for the, each, each building?
Um, that, they'll do flow tests and the, it'll get sized for the sprinklers according to whoever the contractor is on that. But typically, you would have maybe a six-inch line.
That's for fire line, for portable line?
The, the, no, that's, that's fire protection. The portable is typically, I think, like a two-inch line.
For a building?
For a building.
Thank you.
Herna?
Just a follow-up on the, on the sewer. I know most of our wastewater goes to Westboro Treatment Plant. And they are at a capacity, I believe, and some on the, like, southern end of Worcester, some of it goes to Worcester. But I'm assuming this goes to Westboro Treatment Plant. I was wondering if, if they are okay or if Schuess Peri as a whole, DPW is okay with the-
Yeah.
With additional capacity?
Is the Rolfav pumping station, does that-
Right behind it.
Right behind it. Does that go to, I don't know where that does-
That could go to the upper blackstone.
Yeah.
That might go to the upper blackstone.
I think it might.
I think so.
I think it might.
This one?
I think so.
And at the treatment plant, from what I understand, I know Wespro, they had a moratorium and they, they removed their moratorium.
Okay.
So that leaves me, look at, there is some additional capacity over there.
Yeah. On the west and southern ends, you said there'll be landscape, a buffer for landscaping?
Correct.
Would that be just some kind of mild type of landscape? Or other than those green areas where you may plant some trees, would, would you be planting any arborvitae type of?
Yes, and that's what, that's, that's what this is, is shown to, to-
Okay.
It would be. And the arborvitae that we are proposing, they grow, there's different varieties. Some are more small and contained and they are slow growing. They have green giants, which those will grow, they grow like weeds and they can get, you actually have to top them because they will continue to grow. So we're looking to propose those along this buffer because you will get some good quick height of those. And again, that is in addition to having a six-foot, a six-foot fence along this property line as well as the southerly. And then we'll get the height with those evergreens as well as having trees, not only in the parking lot, but we, again, we added those additional landscape islands so that we could beef that up as well.
On the parking spaces, you are leaving up on the front left corner near the Route 9, four unpaved or like that. So that, are those four counted towards the 90 that you are mentioning or there's?
So on our breakdown, we, we have a total that could be 90. We are saying that we'd have four reserved, so it'd be 86 paved.
Okay.
And having the four reserved that if it, you know, if we really needed them, we could. We don't think that we would need, we're trying to give a little more green space. And that corner of the site, we were out there the other week, I was with Hameed, and it's fairly unattractive. So we're trying to make that entranceway a little more attractive.
Just for the benefit of audience here, if they haven't attended the previous sessions, you know, like in terms of the reduction of the units, the residential units, and increase in the commercial space, can you give us an idea of what was originally planned and how far you have come, either in reducing or increasing? You know, you did mention-
Yeah, the original plan, the original plan was, was-
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine residential units. We're, we're now at 38.
Yeah.
And 36, 36, I'm sorry. My count. I was not a math major. And the commercial space, as you may recall, was originally in the old buildings on the site. So that was, what, 1,000? 756 square feet. Now, we are proposing 5,000?
Six twenty-five.
Six twenty-five.
Yeah, that, that's sort of what I know.
Okay. Steve, comments?
It's going to be all gravity sewer?
Yes.
And where's the water coming from, John?
There is water, actually, there's, the water is on our side of the street. There's actually a hydrant that is just-
On Route 9.
On Route 9. And there's a hydrant that's right here, so we'll be tapping into that water line.
But you're going to dead-end it to the last building? Are you going to have sufficient pressure for fire, for sprinklers?
I, I believe, I believe we will. They would have to, when they get into the design of that, the engineer, who's going to be designing the, the sprinkler system, they'll be-
Testing.
Testing, doing pressure tests, flow tests, pressure tests, and then sizing that appropriately. So that would be part of the- So, that would be part of the, the building permit process.
No way to loop it into Gordon Road anyway?
I'm not sure there's any place to loop it to, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With, with it to have any real effect.
Yeah. How big is the water line in the street?
Should be eight.
I, no, I think it's bigger than, um, we have, we have the tie cards, I, I believe, I think it's bigger than an eight. It, it might even be a twelve. I'm, I'm trying to go off memory. But it's at a minimum an eight. Eight's typical, but I think it's, I think it's larger than that.
And it's, and at some point, you're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about, more about aesthetics?
Yeah, the, the elevations.
Elevations, materials.
Yeah. We can discuss some help.
Yeah. Can you, we, Chris, can you pull up the? Can you bring my glasses for us? But they, as was discussed, this is more in keeping with the projects that have been approved over towards, I know you had brought up over Harrington Ave and across the street with the Quinn. So, it's more in keeping with those. They're a little more modern-looking, no big gable roofs. The commercial building does tie in aesthetically with the residential units. And by doing, making it more, I'll say quote-unquote, "modern-looking," that also brings down the roof height. So, originally, we were looking for a waiver on the height, which is allowable for the residential with this. We don't need a waiver on, on the maximum height. We're less than thirty-five feet, I believe. And that's a, an elevation plan of the, of the residential building. So, did they call out, I mean, did they call out?
The materials, yes.
The materials?
I thought I was on there, that's why I'm surprised.
Didn't see anything.
Or, or on the commercial, that might have been called out, but it's-
You can get us a list?
Yeah.
Where you didn't see it?
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was, we'll get, we'll make sure it's there.
While we're talking aesthetics, I'm assuming that these are rooftop units for these? Is, 'cause there's no elevations for what the back of this building would look like. I'm just wondering, from a screening perspective, how are we addressing any noise considerations from the rooftop units?
I know with other, other projects that we've worked on, what they do, what they have been doing, because everything's electric and they have what they call, they're, the roof, it's, it's a tub roof, which means that you have the side, and then interior, it's, it sinks down, and the mechanicals are there. So, they're screened and hidden. We'd have to verify that on this because this is a little bit different program than I've seen with other buildings of this site. But typically, what they do is they do what they call a tub roof. So, then all the mechanicals are hidden inside that, that lowered roof elevation in the center of the building. Which, one, aesthetics, you can't see it, two, noise, to your point, but we'd have to, I'd have to verify that, or-
We'll get that too.
We'll get that.
And if I may, through the chair, this architect was pretty clever in his design. So, alongside of every balcony, there's a small mechanical room. So, there'll be a tankless hot water heater, fully contained in that room, along with a furnace. So, the only exterior equipment would be heat pumps. And those land in the tubbed area behind the taller parapits for each module of each building. So, they'll be, they'll be tucked out of sight.
So, it's not like a super unit, it's individual units?
You got it, yes.
Based across.
Correct.
Sorry, Steve, do you have additional questions? Tim, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, just as a point of clarification in the last month's hearing, I asked about the floor area ratio. I'm not sure I asked the question appropriately, but as you know, that's, there's a, there's a max of one point five. You're well below that. So, my question was really to, to show the, show the calculations of the two apartment buildings, not the, not the commercial building. But I think with the smaller units, it's a moot point, but I just wanted to make that point of clarification. So, you're, you're well below that threshold, doesn't appear to be an issue.
Yeah, I think we're about a third.
And I, I'd like to point out that I specifically asked him to make sure he could address that question that came up tonight.
Yeah, it's only in the, you know, in the future, if there, if there was a floor plan of the buildings with the math, you know, we, we, I wasn't taking the, your calculations for granted, that's all. In the, with these, the, the architect who drew these, is there any way that a three-D model could be presented to the board of this? It would, this is a lot better, by the way, than, but it would just, it would help for visually, most people are visual, if there was a three-D model, that we could cruise around this development to take a look at everything, you know, in three-D would, would be beneficial, I think. But besides that, a couple of things, there was, Mr. Kirk made a good point at the last hearing about the pumping station on Ralph Ave. Has the town looked at that station's capacity to handle this development?
There was no comment from, from the DPW regarding any, any capacity-
Okay.
Issues from that station. I would assume that if there was-
As they typically would be, but.
If there was an issue, I, I would assume that they would have brought it up, but.
Is that something that, that they wouldn't do until a permit was applied for?
I, I don't, I don't wanna speak for them, but I don't believe-
They get, they get notice of these things right away, so.
Yes, what, what I would say-
They have a comment, there's a comment process that goes on with both your board as well as the ZBA. So, I, I think that they got the notice and they, they typically do tell us if they have an issue.
Yeah, so just discussing process, staff gets two bites at the apple essentially for each of these projects. So, one is now during the comment period for this. So, we have received comments from most apartments. We also meet with them in person each month to, to go over these projects. So, I will follow up to get a more definitive response from them with regards to the capacity. But yes, as, as mentioned, the building permit would be another area to catch it. We just, we try to catch it earlier anyways, so.
But it hasn't been raised as an issue yet?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. The, and the other question, I believe, it was Mr. Maggiore, and a butter brought up early on. When you did those test pits on site, was, was there any consideration for soil testing at that time on this site?
Your, your terms in, in terms of like a-
When you found the sewer line?
No, well, that, that purpose of that testing was to look at the soils, to know where ground, what types of soils are there? The groundwater and that's more for drainage.
Okay.
Not necessarily, is there any type of contamination?
Okay.
Typically, on these, they would do what I would imagine to be a phase one. So, they go to the fire department, see if there's any old buried oil tanks, et cetera, if there was ever any issues with spills there. And to my knowledge-
There was a childcare facility there years ago, but I think that was about it.
Okay.
And at some point, it was rumored that it was a auto detailing bay, the existing garage. But we found out that it was an auto upholstery business that was there.
Okay. Would that, would that be a, is, is this a consideration going forward? If this goes, that there would be some soil testing here?
So, usually what happens is when you apply for your demo permit, the fire department really goes through it with a fine-tooth comb. So, they'll, they're, they require us to do asbestos testing, of course, butter notifications, oil tank, underground oil tank mitigation, if such exists. They even go as far as rodent control so that when we raise the buildings, the rodents don't scatter across the neighborhood. So, they, they have a pretty stringent process that we, we'd be following, of course.
I'm familiar with the process to raise the building, but what I'm asking is, is that we'll be there, will they be soil testing in other areas of this lot?
Typically, you, you'd see a phase one with the financing, in the financing process for, for going forward on the building.
Okay, so at some point, there, there would be?
Typically, yes, absolutely.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions. The first one, and I apologize if I jump around a bit, but I do, I did see that we were provided with a fire truck access plan. And my first question or comment is actually to Chris. Do we know, has the fire department had the opportunity to look at this and provide any comment on this?
So, again, I believe so, but I don't have a specific comment related to that. So, again, I, I will follow up with them as well as the water department to make sure that that's-
I spoke to Kevin Weigold to make sure that we got him the data that he was looking for. And that's why one of the additional plans you have this time is the hose, the hose plan.
The hose, yeah.
And what they wanna do is make sure that they can reach the farthest-
Corner.
Corner of the building with their hose, which I believe is like two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So, that's what we-
That's what the hose plan's all about.
That's what the hose plan is about, so that they can actually reach all corners of the buildings with the hose. Not, not only, obviously, we want them to be able to circulate with the, with the fire truck through the site, but they also wanna make sure they can get their hoses where they need to be.
Sure, okay. No, that's, that's great, thank you. And I would just, I'd just be interested to hear if there are comments on that. The other thing that I have on here is related to parking. Everybody loves to talk about parking. And I'm, I'm just wondering if, I understand that you've done a little bit of an analysis. I'm wondering if there needs to be, or if this is, there's cause here for another, a potential parking study, especially due to the change of the square footage, you know, increasing your, your, your commercial space and, and tamping down on the residential. But, I mean, those changes, they, they could, the impacts become different impacts, right? So, I'm just wondering how we can potentially look at that in terms of if there is overflow parking? Well, could we put together an overflow parking plan so that, you know, if, if you do have all of your residents at, at home on a Saturday afternoon and you have, you know, a, a restaurant, a small restaurant that opens on a Saturday afternoon for lunch, now you have a parking problem, which is a good problem to have, right? But suddenly, people are now parking on, outside of the area. How, how can that be addressed? Is that something that has been in consideration? Because it's gonna be more than those four parking spaces.
Well, the short answer is with the underzoning for the number of parking required for both uses combined, we exceed that combined. In terms of what you're saying for overflow, for instance, with the residential, we need a total is required of fifty-four spaces. So, then we need twenty-three spaces for the retail portion. So, that's why we come up with the seventy-seven. So, even with full capacity of both of those, we're still at, well, eighty-six paved plus four overflows. In addition to that, in the evening, when the retail overnight would have less parking requirement, that provides even more overflow capacity for the residential at night. Now, if you bring up, because we did have a conversation, or Hameed did have a conversation with the building inspector, saying you might wanna throw in an option if you did have, say, a restaurant, a small restaurant, went in there. Wouldn't be very big, but that's based on the number of seats that would be in the restaurant. So, if you had something with, you know-
That would be small.
Small, but they said they had a bunch of high tops.
Sure, sure.
What that's going to do, though, if that restaurant is taking up a lot of parking spaces because they have a lot of seats, that's going to reduce the number of spaces that can be attributed to the other tenants. So, you're kind of, by, by going with, say, a restaurant, if they were to have a lot of seats, you're boxing yourself in because now you can't attribute more spaces to the other potential tenants. So, there's, there's a fixed amount of spaces that we can have for that. And so, it's, depending on who the user is, if it's not just straight retail. In terms of, if you have an office, that's less parking. If you have retail, that's more parking. If you have a restaurant, depending on the seating, or unless it's just a takeout, that would potentially have more required parking. But again, you're stealing that, you'd be stealing those spaces away from, from the other tenants. So, I, with this, based on all the numbers that we've, we've crunched, whether on zoning or for both uses, I, I think we're in pretty good shape.
I think if I understand your question, you're asking if there was a study done based on the parking, and it was. It's in the memorandum, actually. It discusses that even at the forty-eight units that were initially proposed with three thousand seven hundred fifty square feet of retail, we had more than enough parking to handle peak and off-peak. And it gets into the detail there. And obviously, now forty-eight units has come down to thirty-six, so.
Sure, sure.
That's a, and the two thousand square feet or whatever the math is, it increased this much smaller in demand.
Okay, thank you. My other question is circulation, kind of circulation related in terms of the retail space. What I noticed is it's all parking in front of the retail space. Has there been any thought, consideration of for loading? I, you know, even if it's, I understand, you, you might not have massive trailers going in there, but you could have some box trucks. I think that there needs to be, like, we, we need to be looking at where loading would be for that. It's not hindering.
If you notice on the layout plan, as you know, typically, a driving aisle is twenty-four feet wide. And on the interior, in front of the retail building, we have a driving aisle that's thirty-seven feet wide. So, we purposefully made that extra, that driving aisle extra wide. So, if there were a delivery, a box truck, et cetera, we would have the ability to have that in there and not affect maneuverability or that driving aisle. We did also, for the, the entrances, obviously, you're not gonna have a loading dock or a loading door. We do on the, as you look at the plan on the east side, which is the right side of the building, as you look at it, we did extend that sidewalk around. So, if there were, if someone needed to have some type of, of loading door there, we could have that on the side to, to at least service, to, to be able to service the building on one side. And then they would have to have double doors, you know, three, two three-os to open it up for, for any larger deliveries. But we're anticipating- It's not that kind of tenant, they're smaller tenants. Then it's smaller spaces, I don't think they're gonna have larger inventory and storage areas just because they are smaller tenant spaces.
And just based on the elevations that you'd provided, you're anticipating that this retail space will have entrances on both the Route nine side as well as the interior side?
Yes, and we did connect around the building with sidewalks. And we do have connectivity from the front of the Route nine side into the existing sidewalk on Route nine. So, there is access on, on both sides. When they do their tenant fit-outs, they might have to get a little, I don't know how they are, it depends on what their business is.
Sure.
I know they're gonna, they're going to want signage or visibility on Route nine. That's why they did the same elevations on the front and the back so that they do have some good, you know, front appearances, both for anybody who's in the site as well as driving by on Route nine.
I think the Fidelity Building's a good example of that, where the stop and drop used to be. Where it's got, from the Route nine side, even though it's not accessed from there. And it's got the visibility, but the access is through the parking lot in the back, so.
Sure, okay. All right. Is there any staff comments on this?
Um, I did, so, hearing some of the follow-up items that we can do, I just did have a question about the, the three-D model, a, a remassing model, and I just, just to clarify what we're looking for from there. What I've seen is a, a massing model, which is like a three-D rendering. That's typically a pretty extensive review. We've also typically done Viewshed, which is a little, little less intensive, where they actually, you know, you take a, a graphic of the elevation from each of the public ways. And I just wanted to kind of right-size that to make sure that we can get the right deliverable from the applicant in regards to that.
Chris, is that more of like a, a, a real-life isometric?
Right, yeah.
So, you can see from approaching on Route nine or whatever, then you can see what the, the interior-
Yeah, it takes the topography and then the, it's just a flat.
If I may, Julie?
Sure.
Like a plan view elevation for me.
Maybe we'll look for, like, from Gordon Road.
I'm sorry, I'm, I think what I meant was, it would just really help if, is this three-D software out there that, you know, Chief Architect or any other program that the, an architect might use, that would be- that, you know, Chief Architect or any other program that the, an architect might use, that would be helpful to see it that way. I'm not, I'm not saying it it's it's a requirement at this point.
Okay.
But it's, it would go a long way to helping, to help the aesthetics of this in the Lakeway Overlay District to give us a good understanding of of what this development is going to look like. Um, as opposed to, you know, the the two D elevations help, but three D is always better. That was my only point. I'm not saying it should be a a requirement at this point.
Understood, thank you.
If that helps.
It does.
Anything else, Chris?
That's all I had for now, so.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening? Yes, sir, please come up and state your name.
Uh, Mark Majori, Nineteen Gordon Road. My question's gonna be short, depending on, I'm assuming this is probably gonna go and continue on if if the vote goes, does not go through um in a couple of weeks with a the town meeting. So, I mean, I'm assuming this is is this meeting, I mean, there, you guys are not gonna make a decision tonight, correct?
I I wouldn't.
Okay. And then as far as if the vote does go through, um, and and this might be a question for index and gender item, um, will this go continue on, or is this kind of gonna stop or delay, do you think?
So I think if I'm understanding the question correctly, I believe you're asking if with the town meeting vote, depending upon the outcome of that, how that would impact this project, is that correct?
That's correct.
Sure. Yeah, so um, this applicant has also applied for um an eighty-one P plan, uh, which the board will be reviewing tonight. Um, the criteria that the board can look at for that is only access and frontage, um, of which we've determined they are entitled to that endorsement. Um, that will grant them a two-year zoning freeze, so they will be, uh, they would not be affected by the moratorium.
So they would not be affected?
Correct.
Okay.
Is Town Council, uh, opined on that?
Not yet.
I'm I'm not sure what the answer is.
I know that, I know there's been an inquiry, but no, not yet. Unless you heard from them.
There's an issue about the timing of the advertisement for the warrant article.
Right.
I I'm not, I don't know.
No, I know, I I'm just, I'm just curious if that's.
I know the answer to the question, you know, I don't, you know, i- i- in theory, you know, the the way I look at this is, okay, I don't know how it makes it annulity in any event because they applied for a permit. And say there's a two-year moratorium. Does it add? It it does, yeah. I know the way the warrant article's written, but but I'm not sure that that's legally effective because i- i- if we render a decision, they have two years from the special permit. The per- special permit's live. It's a possibility that they could come in and get an extension or wh- whatever, although, you know, this case law, but what is needed for an extension of the special permit. But I'm I'm not sure the way the warrant article is written necessarily makes this annulity.
Is there? Is there any kind of clarification for that? Is there? I mean, I know, this might be a question for the next agenda, but is there any? Is there any clarification for when goes the town meeting?
So I I don't have a formal opinion, uh, that's certainly something that we can get um from Town Council, but my reading of it is is that it would um be a an effective zone freeze. But again, we need Town Council's formal opinion on that.
Tony McDowsley presumably will be at town meeting.
Okay. A lot of my questions are really construction related, so I don't know if this is the time to address them or is, you know, up down the line is a better time for that? Because the traffic, I mentioned traffic last time, and I don't think they have a traffic engineer here. So I'm not gonna go into that if that's. Because I think the traffic is is a is a major deal with with this one entrance here, and it affects everything on Route Nine. There is, in this little s- triangle, there is a a light post right there. Um, and that's gonna affect lighting. I don't, I don't see any lighting, how that's gonna affect, I don't know if that's a master OT issue um, or if that's a, I don't know if that's town owned, but there's a light right there. That's gonna have to be removed. I don't see, I don't know any kind of plans for that. I don't know the lighting, the lightness of the sign, the lightness of the street. I think there's another light post right here that will be taken away. Um, I don't know who who would address that.
Without knowing where those lights are in terms of right-of-way, I'm I'm making an assumption that they're in the state right-of-way, right? So it would have to be part of a conversation, because they're on Route Nine, right?
Yeah, they're on the sidewalk.
And it's one of those in that, um, the uh, in the overlay district, the decorative, the
Yep.
The black, what decorative lights, one of those. Um, I believe that's within the right-of-way. We're tw- we're skirting right on it. But it, at any, at any rate, um, there will be um a permit that's gonna have to be applied for with DOT. With, because we're modifying curb cuts, as well as we'll be going in separately for the water. So there's two permits with DOT. At that point, we'd be discussing, does that light get shifted over one way or other? Does it get removed? It's, that's part of the conversation with them.
Sure.
So that all has to happen once you guys approve this plan, or the?
Yeah, when they begin conversations.
A lot of the questions I have is for that. Just in general, the general um construction, um, it was in the letter on September fourth um, from the Plan and Economic Development to the Planning Board, um, the construction hours of this job. Um, I noticed it said Monday through Saturday, seven AM to seven PM. I would like to consider it, um, the hours that you guys gave to the Ralph Ave Pumping Station, which was Monday through Friday, seven to four PM. The reason why I say that is because, um, you know, this is, this is, this is not just one house you're building. This is pretty much a construction site.
Sure.
And it's gonna be on residential, half of it's gonna be on truly the residential, probably on on back, my backend. And um, uh, there's people that work from home, which will will have to suffer. But, you know, after I work, I don't wanna hear beeping of the trucks after five PM on Saturday. I mean, if, and then, you know, if you guys are, you know, doing the construction on Saturday, I think, I think we're gonna suffer enough that I think the hours could be reduced a little, could be considered.
The apartments, any of these modular components?
No.
No? You're gonna build it all, it's all gonna be stick-built?
It's pod-designed, but it is stick-built, yes.
And then, um, and just in general, what, you know, kind of follow-up on the soil testing. Um, the reason why I ask that to be be done is, I'm assuming there's gonna be um, soil material that's gonna be stockpiled onto the property for off-off shipment, correct?
Yeah.
And you usually have, you usually have to test that to get that off-site. And whether that stockpile is gonna be covered or not, I would like to know what's in that soil because it's gonna be, from what I see from the design, you know, it's on sheet seven of the construction.
I see what you're referencing, the mis- the material stockpile area.
That's like, less than fifty feet away from the residence.
Sure.
Okay, so, and that's pre, that's that's set back, and then you have the staging area. So I'm assuming that's where the convex boxes, all the material's gonna be probably locked up and everything. And with the hours, you know, I I've been on construction sites before, that's where they're gonna congregate in the morning and at night, and it's right, um, you know, right in the eleven Gordon Road's backyard, pretty much. So we're gonna hear that seven o'clock in the morning, and then we're gonna hear that o'clock at five o'clock in the afternoon or later. We're gonna have a lot of clicking and clanging, you know, bobcats and tools and whatnot. And that's pretty close to the residence. This, this is the the commercial residential boundary right here. So everything this is commercial, and everything here is residential. And I know from experience on the second floor, when I live up, open the windows on the second floor, I can hear the Selco guys going into the and I can pretty much hear the conversation loud and clear. I mean, I could, I can tell you what they had for lunch. I mean, I mean, but I mean, I mean, I mean, you know, they're they're respectful, but you're gonna hear a lot. I mean, this is a construct, I mean, those are two or three guys with a truck.
Yep.
And they they store, they store their transformers here.
Yep, understood.
So that's one of the reasons why I'm asking for the testing, because this has been here for years and years and years and years. Never know what's kinda leaking underneath that. And that's one of the reasons. And it was an old apple orchard, which is probably naturally containing arsenic soil. Um, you know, that blowing into the residential side, I would just like to know what's in the soil uncovered. I mean, they shouldn't take, it's not a, it's an easy request. It's not. It's just kind of a peace of mind.
But just to be clear, unless they're gonna do, they're probably gonna do a phase one as part of this.
Yes.
Okay, and that's not drilling? That's not phase two, that's not drilling and testing. And the only way that they're gonna be required to uh test anything is if during the demo, they find a U S T, or there's asbestos, or I don't think that it's in our bylaw that we can impose upon them an obligation to do a phase two.
No, no, and I I'm not asking for a phase two.
Okay.
Uh, but they are gonna have to ship that soil out, and they will have to test that.
I don't think it's a balanced site, right? You're gonna, there's gonna be an export of bill.
Well, they're gonna be, it's a very flat site, but of course, they're gonna be stripping off all the top and sub and and stumping.
They will be, they will have to, if they're, if they're, I don't know where they're gonna dump it to, but they're gonna have, need a facility to dump it. And they will need to have tested for that. So why, might as well just.
Part of their construction plan, though. That, I mean, that's not anything that's regulated by this.
No, but that's.
Would have to be part of any construction plan that they put together.
Yeah, that that's what I'm saying.
Sure.
It's it's kind of a peace of mind.
Yeah.
Yep, understood.
Don't want you having some expectation.
No, 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 no. But that's, that's what I wanted to follow up.
Approval, if they get approval, there's gonna be a condition that you gotta do a phase two. I don't.
No, 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 I wasn't asking that.
Okay.
I was just kind of going, uh, kind of following up on soil testing was what I really wanted to know. Because I just, if there is high levels of arsenic in there, and it really needs to be cleared up, you might wanna know that beforehand, before before it sits there for, I don't know how long.
Was it an apple orchard?
It was. And that, this has been here in the nineteen fifties, and who knows what, what kind of.
Still, still apple trees on the site?
No. And this is, this is way before my, it was probably before, my my house was built in nineteen fifty-five. So all that was all apple orchard. And really, a lot of.
Half the town was.
Yeah, there really, a lot of the questions I have is the traffic, the traffic and just the entrance and out. You know, I I just know from coming in and out of Gordon Road, because it looks like the same distance, same road distance from Gordon Road to where that entrance is. And it's a tight squeeze to come in. Most of the people that come from Fairlon, uh, Fairlon neighborhood, they come into Gordon Road because of the Maple Ave line. They come in and in and out here, so I know a lot of the traffic, and it's tight up there. So if you have a FedEx truck, Amazon truck, you know, Gavin Delarue, the commercial side, um, and then you got the residential, you're gonna, you're gonna have a lot of cars here backing up. And when we get to the traffic study, I'm gonna really go into how people are gonna be very frustrated getting out of this in and out of here. Because it's frustrating to get out of our neighborhood. I can just imagine what's gonna happen there. And they got two businesses in between. They have the I car here and the dentists. You got ve- I don't know if you guys ever drove in by there, but it's a very small entrance. Now, now I pay attention to it every time I go on United East. Small. And you're gonna have a lot, if you have a commercial, if they're successful and you have enough enough traffic, it's tight. It's tight. You ever gone to Trippie's or Papa's Hardware Store?
Yep.
Is there today?
It's, it's, it's gonna be that, it's gonna be that kind of thing. So it, that's what I'm more worried about now, is just with the more of the commercial side, it's gonna be, I mean, I I wished them luck, but I I, if I was a business, I'd be, and then the other part is, is you're gonna have entrances in front, in the back, is that what you said, of the businesses?
Based on the.
Pedestrian. You're not gonna get any, I mean, all the parking's maybe in the back.
Yeah, no one's gonna park.
No, no, no one's not gonna go in the front, especially that areas.
Well, there's no parking in front.
No, there's no parking in front. So I mean, it's, the front entrance is gonna be kind of useless.
Except for aesthetics.
Yeah.
We just didn't want our back towards Route Nine.
Yep.
Right. Wanted it to be attractive.
Pretty up the border.
So everyone's gonna come and park here, and then they're gonna either, they're either gonna go through the entrances here, but they're not gonna walk all the way around to the front.
Yes.
So it's, and then the signage with, uh, you know, I think you said you have a potential tenant, and with the signage, you might have to go through the Z B A. I don't know what, I don't know what.
Something that we wouldn't.
Oh, I know, I know.
Right.
It's one of those things where you look on Route Nine, you got the I car sign there, and you have the dentists. I don't know how you're gonna have visual.
No, understood, understood.
Interior lighting in the site, do we have, or is it just on the building?
No, there uh, there is some interior, just in the, in this, in the middle of the um landscape out in the middle.
Can you just, did you do some sort of foot candle analysis? Can you just give it to show that there's no spill over?
We, we did, we did, but we have to update that because then when we flip the entranceway, um, we have to just modify that. But the parking lot area we have, which would be obviously closest to the Gordon Road of others.
I pause, I don't remember seeing it, but if you, I I knew there weren't a tremendous amount of interior lights, but if you can.
Yeah.
Just update that, just to show that it's not gonna be spill over on Gordon Road.
Absolutely.
The the plan is for it to be a dark sky compliant.
Yeah.
Site.
Okay.
That's it. The other, the other thing is the sewer line there is, they didn't. There is, there is a sewer line up here, the cover's there. If you go back in my property, I can see it, so it's, it's there. So I'll I'll save my other questions for.
Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this? Come on up, sir.
Christopher Kirk, Forty Westwood Road. Um, uh, my understanding is that uh, uh, commercially, commercial properties are are a net revenue benefit to the town, whereas uh residential properties tend to be revenue losses to the town or at best break even, eh, due to schools and medical services and that sort of thing. So I know, I would assume that one of the considerations in any, reviewing any application for development is, uh, would it, would the property, would the pro- project be a net uh a- asset to the town in terms of revenue? And I know, for example, years ago, this 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 town was so des- desperate to conserve uh commercial property, that it went to buying, spending five million dollars for a parcel on South Street near the intersection of one forty and held on to it for about twenty years before it finally developed it commercially. So I was wondering whether any submission has been received from this bo- board uh, regarding whether the revenue from three small shops would outweigh any losses to the town of thirty-six residential units. Has there been any submission of that, madam?
I have not seen any financial analysis of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if the project proponents done any further in-depth analysis.
There's usually a, a, an impact form that gets filled out.
There's usually, um, a, an impact form that gets filled out. Um, that was originally based on the original when it was only seven hundred and fifty square feet of what the existing. There's nothing that reflects the increase to the, the five thousand six hundred and twenty-five and then also the reduction in the residential.
Right.
And I'd also point out that, um, having a one and two, one and two bedroom, um, units tends not to be attractive for, um, you know, families for any long-term. You might have someone in there with a, a, you know, an infant or a toddler, short-term, but for, for someone being into the school system, you know, from grade school through high school, that with the one and two bedrooms, that doesn't tend to promote that, um, you know, long-term school, schoolchildren, which as everybody knows, that's the biggest, the biggest expense with, with residential. So, but, but with that said, no, there hasn't been an updated, um, impact study with the increased retail and the reduction in the residential.
I, I just asked that question because as soon as this hearing is continued, I presume it will be continued, uh, there's going to be a hearing on a moratorium on construction in the same area, so presumably that's motivated at least in part in financial considerations. So that's, that was my motive, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Any other members wishing to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
Do you want me to speak about the estimated value of the project?
Good evening.
Hi, Kathleen Cohane, twenty-nine Gleason Road. I'm happy to see, um, that tenants are in the mix coming along. Um, I was worried about the size of these units and everything. I did a very unscientific drive-through survey of, um, the, the lake, uh, Lakeway area and I found eleven smaller units that were vacant and I was concerned that this would just add to that. So, um, I hope you fill them up quick, you know. Uh, the other thing is, um, I don't quite understand why you're not extending the sidewalk a little bit further to the end of the property line in the front. I think just because of snow storage, you're gonna wanna have extra area there to get rid of that snow rather than have it pile up in the front. John, you're shaking your head.
No, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to fill, where, where specifically?
In the, in the, uh, in the front, the sidewalk only goes to this, this front sidewalk and I don't understand why you're not bringing it up.
That's tying into the existing sidewalk.
Yeah.
We're extending the sidewalk in the site into the existing sidewalk on Route nine.
On Route nine.
Which then, um, that continues to the end of our property. There's one section where there's a curb cut where there's some pavement, but no there. We're tying into the existing sidewalk that is on Route nine.
Okay, good, all right. You know, looking at this eight by, ten, eight by elevens, uh, good.
Get a big chain on it.
I get that. Uh, yeah, I'm happy to see the reduced height and everything like that. On, um, the landscape plan, we don't have this in the packets yet.
Correct.
Um, so make sure that gets in there, 'cause you know I'm gonna count trees. You know, you know that I do that, you know, yeah.
I'll make them double check.
Yeah, make them double check, yeah, and the species and everything, you know. Uh, the other thing is, I wanna, um, encourage you to think carefully about what Mark has asked about, uh, for the time that, that this is gonna be going on. Um, our neighborhood has had the Rolfe Ave construction going on and it's noisy, you, you know, so, um, to shorten those hours would be, especially on the weekends, would be a good thing. Uh, you know, because it's not like, you know, everybody has quarter acre lots or bigger, you know, they're smaller, there's a lot of people that it affects. So there, and then the other thing is on the traffic study, um, I don't know if there's any way to account for people running the light at, uh, Route nine at Maple Ave.
On Route nine, I don't know.
Does this come up? Yeah, so another, um, unscientific anecdotal study is, you know, that, that, um, that intersection was redone maybe twenty years ago, I think. That's when the town redesigned that. And if you come down Maple Ave and we're gonna turn and squiggle onto Gordon Road, um, at least two cars go, blow through the light going eastbound, which would be going into the direction there, and coming westbound, it's pretty often that one car goes through, but it's not a regular thing. Going eastbound, I just sit there and wait, you know. So I, I don't know if that's something that ever gets taken to, into account to on the traffic studies when they do the counts or anything like that.
The accident reports.
Yeah.
I don't think they do, they, frankly, they look at the law.
Yeah, it's not okay, yeah.
So, so that, that wouldn't be included in the traffic study, but, um, the town did, um, start a traffic advisory committee. Um, I'd be happy to refer that to them, uh, for discussion.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see, uh, the police department has that grant, um, now and maybe, uh, take a little gander there and spend a little time there at that intersection. That could be, uh, you could encourage them to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this? Yes, sir?
Do I have to go over the board?
Yes, you do. No, I need you over here, you need to.
I'd like it over here.
I know, but we gotta pick you up with the microphone.
Come on, Henry.
I'm a little intimidated right now.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right. No, I was thinking.
Can I have your name, sir?
Oh, jeez, yeah. Henry Granpetro, eleven Gordon Road, I'm a director butter to the project. Hey, it looks good, looks like it's, it's gonna be okay. My question is, a few years ago, I'm gonna say about ten, twelve years ago, I was selling my mother's house, one fifty-four O'Mill Road. Got a call from a woman, very interested in buying it, but she asked me a question. Are there high tension wires near that house? Actually, well, not really, they're maybe about, uh, an eighth of a mile from the house. Oh, I don't want it then, that's dangerous. Now, I thought I had the sale done, but because those high tension wires were an eighth of a mile away, it completely nixed the sale. My question is, these apartments, right on top of the high tension wires, maybe it's not a concern, maybe it is. But from what I understand, they can cause health hazards. That's just something I've been thinking about since the whole project was, and nothing against you guys, I mean, you guys, I talked to them at the first meeting, nice guys. And I, that's one of my concerns. Is that gonna be a problem? Are people gonna get sick from these high tension? You're right under it, you're right next to it. I mean, you can't get any closer unless you've lived on it. That's just my concern, uh, since the very first time I, when Mark came to me with the project, I said, look, look where the, the high tension wires are. They're gonna be right under it. To me, it's, I don't know, maybe it's a concern, maybe it isn't. That's it.
Appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Henry.
Anyone else on this matter this evening?
I thought Henry was gonna talk about baseball. Like in nineteen sixty-seven.
All right, well, at this point, it does sound like there are a couple of items that we need to get some clarification on. I think we've, we've discussed a couple of different items that maybe you guys can go back and chew on a bit.
The question of the PD.
I'd like to, at this point, look at continuing it to our, um, January hearing if that's acceptable.
Lighting.
Yeah.
Okay, um, at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to continue this public hearing to our January meeting.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Can I just ask a question?
Certainly.
Um, just for clarification, what is it that you'd be looking for from us specifically?
You talking about the, the model?
No, he said the model wasn't required.
Yes, so I think, I can run through, there's a number of items, I've been taking notes. Some of them, I think, are the applicant's responsibility, some of them will be, uh, our office responsibility, follow-up. Um, so I think we talked about the massing model slash, um, you know, view shed analysis. Um, so I think that would be the applicant's responsibility. Happy to kind of work with some examples that we've had for other projects, um, that I can provide to you. Sewer capacity and the fire department access is our department's, um, requirement to follow up on, um, the decorative light ownership. Um, I, I believe that's Lakeway Business District, which would go to, um, the, uh, D P W, but I will confirm that. So that's, uh, our office. Um, hours of operation revised, um, condition, uh, hours. Um, I would look for some kind of indication from the applicant in regards to, um, that, um, but that is the board's purview to set those hours as they see fit. So we talked about staging, um, so we'll be looking to see, um, if there's an opportunity to relocate staging or revise the staging. Shielding of the lights in full cutoff, we do have the dark sky compliance and the photometric plan, but we can look at the shielding to see if there's.
Looking for update on that.
Yeah.
Yep.
The fiscal analysis, fiscal impact analysis, narrative to be updated with revised figures would be the applicant. Referral of the intersection to the traffic advisory committee will be our department, that's my list.
Okay, thank you.
How about building materials for the phase?
And building materials, yep.
Thank you.
Is there further consideration that we need to give for, for traffic?
Um, so we, we do have a, a traffic report, um, we'll send that out for pre-review, um, to have that done.
That'd be great.
Now, the traffic report we have is based on the.
The higher number.
All numbers, uh, higher numbers.
Yeah.
Would you want to update that to reflect the current numbers, both in terms of increase in commercial space and.
We'll talk to him.
Okay.
Cut it in a third.
Pretty simple.
Yeah.
He should be able to update it fairly quickly and we'll try to get it to Chris as, as soon as we can.
Obviously, it will be to your benefit, you know, because the traffic council will be let, yeah.
Agreed.
I'd move that we continue this public hearing on the, uh, mixed use site plan approval and special permit in the Lakeway Business District until Thursday, January eighth at seven P M.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as have it, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Can I tell my sixty-seventh story right now?
No.
Yeah, that's right.
At, at the next meeting, the next meeting.
He used to play baseball with my brother.
Oh, really?
Probably cost a triple play.
Next item on the agenda is the proposed zoning bylaw changes for special town meeting that is going to be held on December seventeenth. Um, this is the continued public hearing for Article One, Section seven M, Lakeway Overlay District and Section seven N, Route twenty Overlay District, temporary mixed use moratorium. Chris, do you have some?
Thank you, I do have some, um, comments this evening, um, just to reframe and to, um, provide some additional context to the proposal for the benefit of the board and the public. So, um, just as the, a reminder, the overall purpose, um, and what we are proposing is a pause, a temporary pause on mixed use development in the overlay districts to allow the town time to study recent project outcomes with community goals and implement land use controls where appropriate. Development interest, uh, within the overlays is increasing, um, and we see a need for the town to evaluate whether the existing framework still aligns with community goals. What the, you know, reasons for the study, um, that we are looking at is the traffic conditions continue increasing along Route nine and Route twenty. Uh, because these corridors are controlled by Mass Dot, um, the town needs a clearer picture and understanding of how future development interacts with the regional roadway system that we do not manage, uh, and land use controls in relation to that. Uh, in addition, water and sewer capacity, um, in the short term is very well understood, but long-term capacity is uncertain. Um, and the study is, uh, a study would provide accurate information on, uh, what types and levels of future development can be supported by, um, the infrastructure. Building on infrastructure needs, um, conditions vary across the overlays and updated data is needed to identify potential upgrades, needs and timings and constraints to the overall infrastructure network in relation to these projects. In addition, um, application alignment, um, recent proposals have required extensive revisions right out the bat from coming in the, in the door. Um, so looking at our design criteria and submittal requirements, um, will, would hopefully allow us to improve alignment with community goals and make permitting more efficient by having them more refined by the time they get into the board, um, having that more clear and outlined. Um, the goals, uh, of it, of the study are to review the zoning provisions of both overlay districts, to incorporate community expectations through the master plan process and other related planning efforts, to clarify terminology and design expectations to ensure zoning aligns with the current planning and infrastructure realities, and utilize updated traffic, water, sewer and infrastructure data to, and to informed, to support more informed decision-making. We also outlined, uh, a study timeline that fits within that twenty-four month period. Um, I do wanna take special note, uh, of the community engagement process that we'll be, um, proposing to engage in. Um, so really looking to gather resident input, um, from property owners and local businesses to identify share goals and priorities. So, um, more than just our regular process of a community forum, a survey that we've done with other, um, projects, we would be, really be looking to use those three months and do extensive community engagement to really understand, um, from the residents and from local businesses, um, what the zoning needs to achieve, uh, for them. So that would be a three-month period within that, uh, overall outline. We would include not just the community, a number of community forums, um, but also looking at the surveys and other, uh, engagement models that we would be piloting. Uh, allows some time for bylaw or policy amendments, um, to be developed consistent with those study outcomes. Um, and we're preparing for the May twenty, twenty-seven town meeting, um, leaving the option to move to fall twenty twenty-seven if we need to. So it is a short timeline, but we're, uh, anticipating a very robust engagement and study, um, to meet the needs, uh, for the community and reviewing all of that data and providing actionable outcomes for that, so. Um, just finally, a clarification on the temporary pause. Um, it would apply only to the overlays and would not affect underlying zoning, uh, so it would not prevent commercial development. Uh, the pause simply removes the added flexibility from the overlays while the study is underway. Um, zoning freezes and grandfathered rights would remain protected under state law, as is normal. So, um, with that, I think that summarizes my comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has at this time. Um, this evening, I, you know, given the timing, I will be, uh, recommending that the board, uh, provide their recommendation and vote on that, um, for town meeting. Uh, I do have a draft, um, letter that was provided, um, the memorandum that would be submitted tomorrow. It's, it would reflect whatever the board votes this evening, so.
Appreciate that. Uh, we'll go with, uh, board member comments first. Matt, do you have any comments on this?
No, no comments at this time.
Okay, do you know?
No comments.
Arna?
No comment.
Steve?
I just, I have a couple. Again, this, this is directed toward the overlay, the moratorium is directed toward the overlay. I think that the residents frustrations are with the forty Bs and the, maybe the, uh, M B T A community zones. Uh, I, I think our board has done a pretty good job of, uh, regulating or, uh, uh, looking at these projects on a case-by-case basis. Again, we started out with Lakeway Commons, then we had the project, uh, Polar Views behind the Walgreens, and we did the Beal School. And then we did Edgemere Crossing. And again, most of those properties were derelict properties that the town wanted to see redeveloped. Big problems for the town. So, uh, you know, I, I think the economic realities are that the money's in the multifamily and that's why people are, are building these mixed use projects. And I, I have suggested, uh, to people at, at Town Hall and to some of our elected officials that, okay, if you want to, uh, not necessarily discourage these mixed use projects, but you wanna encourage other uses, then I think we have to take a hard look at what is allowable in the commercial and industrial zones. May- maybe regulate them, tie them to site plan approval, but have more allowable uses. Not everything can be by special permit because it discourages users. People don't want the uncertainty of having to apply for a special permit, uh, for some of these uses in the commercial industrial zone. I think that's gotta be part of the stuff. I think that's got to be part of the study because otherwise, the default is going to be, oh, let's do mixed use. Let's get the money with the apartments. It, it's just, it's simple economics.
Tim?
You know, I think there was, there's good points, Steve just raised some good points now. You made good points in the prior discussion on this. In that this could, if, if this, if this does go into effect, this could stop some good things for Shrewsbury. Uh, that may happen within the next two years, uh, that people would, would most likely be in favor of these good things happening now along both corridors. But I, I think there's, at the same time that, you know, there's, there seems to be an overwhelming desire to, uh, to pause and, and, and study it more closely. So it seems to be the, uh, direction it's going to go. But I, but the, the possibility that, you know, good things could happen soon or that are delayed is, is also, uh, a real thing that, that may hurt the town. So it, this is, this is a tough one, but it, it looks like, uh, it should go to town meeting.
Um, I, I mean, I, I think that I've shared my comments at the, at the last hearing and I haven't really changed my thought process on it. I, I do have serious concerns, um, for putting a wholesale, uh, a moratorium like this. I think there are some potential unintended consequences of really having a chilling effect of development and, and letting those good things that are, are potentially coming to the town go elsewhere. And I don't think that anyone in the community wants to see that. Um, so that's, that's my two cents. Like to open it up, this is a public hearing, so if there's members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening.
My majority nineteen corner road. Kind of following up on the last agenda. If it does go past and there's a moratorium, you said there's going to be a community outreach. Is that going to be between the town and the, and the community? Or is, does the planning board have any input or not input? Is it, what, what would be the, the, the flow down of this, the, uh, of the next two years?
Yeah, so through the chair, the, um, community engagement would be run through our office, uh, in coordination with a selected consultant. So what that would do is we would run that, um, you, you'll typically provide in, information or updates to, uh, the planning board and other, uh, relevant local boards, um, but it's, it's the, the town staff that would, uh, manage that process. It would be with, uh, the public. And again, uh, as stated, we would be looking for a very broad-reaching engagement strategy. So typically what that is, is the community forums to gather large groups together and do workshops, surveys, to make sure that people, um, who aren't, you know, willing to attend those forums or otherwise, um, um, are, prefer the survey format, that we get their opinions on it, um, typically targeted at specific questions, um, related to the forums or what data we're collecting. Um, we also look at, um, doing stakeholder engagement, which is typically one-on-one or small groups, uh, interviews. Typically, that's towards, you know, business owners or, um, you know, experts in certain areas, um, or, um, kind of resident neighborhood champions, um, that are identified by our office through the engagement strategy. And then again, we would also be looking at, um, expanding that further. So that's kind of the, the base model. But, you know, there's other, um, opportunities that we can look at and coordinate, um, typically through the select board to identify what, um, are the best, uh, modes to reach residents, um, where they are and get their opinions, uh, and input most effectively.
So it would kind of mirror what we do for the master plan?
It, it would. So I, I think a lot of these engagement opportunities are going to run in tandem with that. So that's why I brought up a little bit of the, the economic forum. We would also be doing, um, the master plan update at the same time as this process. So, um, although those would be separate, I think there's a lot of overlap, um, that we could kind of combine some of those efforts, um, in some fashion, so.
And so for each overlay, would, I, I remember last time, uh, the last meeting that you said, is there any potential that it could, the overlay could change in that time? Whether we reduce the overlay or expand the overlay, is that something that would be open to that?
Are you talking about the boundaries or the, the regulations?
Both, both.
So, so the, the proposal, um, this evening a, and for the upcoming town meeting is for the moratorium. What we could explore through that, um, study process is if the boundaries should be changed. Um, we certainly would be looking at language of the existing language and if there's policy amendments. So, um, I don't want to box in those findings at this stage. I think anything's on the table at this point.
But the articles written contemplate that the planning board during that two years will meet and discuss potential changes to the bylaws.
Correct.
That's.
Okay. I, I mean, the reason why.
Including alteration of the map potentially or.
Yeah. And one of the reasons why I'm asking that is because, um, you know, if I'm going to vote for this, I want to make sure that. I, I do have a question on the Route Nine overlay because I think it's, it was written over twenty years ago. And, um, do we have anyone?
The Lake Way?
The Lake Way.
Yeah.
Right. It's twenty-five years now, I think.
It was rewritten, too. It was rewritten.
Yeah. When was it rewritten?
Like two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
Yeah, both districts are, um, were established.
Lake Way Commons.
Yeah.
We had, we initially did it and it was Judy Barrett came in and it was, it was well intentioned, but no one ever built anything in the Lake Way District because they felt it was too unwieldy. So then Mr. Grossman came in, I saw, I ran into Mr. Grossman last night in Boston. And he came in and his development team suggested tweaks to the bylaw, which we did. And that's, now you got the Lake Way.
So then it would go to like town meeting for that?
Yes. I, in my view, is a very successful and very beneficial project for the town. It's just my opinion.
So is there anyone in the town, currently in the town, um, worked on the original? Oh, you did?
I worked on everything. I worked on the original.
I mean, I, I do have, I do have some questions about, I'm not going to go through them.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I do have questions because one of.
You, you go, go to, go to my firm's website, Fletcher Hilton, I can give you my cell number and you can.
Okay.
Ask me some questions.
Okay. I mean, I can do that off, I can do that off-line. But I mean, that's, it's one of the reasons why I, I want to know if I'm, what I'm voting for or the town can vote for.
Oh, I can't tell you what to do on that.
No, 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 no. I mean, like, I want to know, I think the town wants to know. I, I, I don't know if they really know exactly what they're going to be voting for.
I have no doubt.
So, so.
Well, they might, yeah.
So the, the proposal this evening is for a moratorium and, and nothing beyond that. What will be done during that moratorium is a study, and again, that's where I don't want to box in what that study will find. Whatever that study produces, the town will pursue all of those action items. Whether they're policy adjustments, whether it's, um, again, I don't want to box it in, whatever that study finds is what we will pursue.
So there'll be enough community engagement with, in those two years to?
The community engagement will form the policy adjustments that are, are developed.
But it's not going to stop forty Bs less until we get to the ten percent, and it's not going to stop the MBTA communities. So.
Well, I, that's, that's something that I want the town members to know because I don't know if they know that or not.
I, and I think that hand in hand, you got to look at, okay, expansion of allowable uses in the commercial industrial zone. Cause I think that bylaw is antiquated. And it's tough to keep, it's tough for a zoning bylaw, which is not a living, breathing document, to keep up with market forces and market demands. It just doesn't work. That's why people come in. It's why we have use variances. I know people hate them, but, uh, that's why people come in and look to do zoning changes at, at town meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other members of the public, Mr. Kirk?
Chris Kirk, Forty Western Road. I, I got a lot of questions, so I'll try to keep them short and go through them as fast as I can. Uh, the first question is, what is the motive for the moratorium? Because, uh, uh, in a memorandum to the board of October fourteenth, page four, it states that one motive is to revise the bylaw to better serve the land use development interests of the town, capital T. So presumably since, uh, commercial property brings in more revenue to the town than residential, one of the motives would be to preserve commercial, commercially zoned property. And I'm just wondering, uh.
I don't know that we can speak to motive. I think we, our, our role is just to, whether.
Well, then through you.
Recommend to town.
Through you, through you, to, uh, Mr., uh, McGoldbrich, McGold, uh.
You got it?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. McGoldrick. I was going to call you Mr. Goldbrich. I apologize. I just.
I respond to all of them.
Okay, I'm sorry. Presumably you had some knowledge or involvement in drafting this, the article? Yes, no?
So, yeah, through the chair, um, correct, I did write the article and the memorandum that you're referencing.
Yeah.
So again, I think it outlines the motives, um, pretty succinctly in there. Primarily, we were, um, directed to develop this moratorium in response to public comments, uh, related to studying the outcomes of, uh, our existing zoning, um, and having that moratorium in place to allow the town time to study, um, those outcomes and those policy goals.
Mr. McGoldrick is just a knowledgeable scribe.
Yeah.
It's not his motive or this board's motive.
No, no.
We just take the article, our, our challenge is just to take the article and make a decision whether to recommend or not to recommend. So I don't think this board can give you an opinion as to what the motives are.
Okay. Another thing, a question is, uh, the, do the present overlays specify limits on multifamily residential destruct, construction in the overlay districts?
Just the density? Yeah, it was like two fifty, like two fifty.
Oh, yeah, so there, there is a current, uh, limit of two hundred and fifty units.
Two hundred and fifty units.
For, for those.
Two fifty in Edgemere, two fifty in Lake Way is a max.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. And also, uh, I'm curious as to why the, uh, the overlay districts or why the area that's, uh, going to be subject to the moratorium does not include the entire length of, 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 uh, Route Nine through Shrewsbury, including, for example, like, uh, the area east of Oak Street on Route Nine or, uh, Edgemere Village on Route Twenty. Was there some reason for omitting them?
There's no proposal to change the, the boundaries of the district. Those are existing, um, and they are, as town meeting voted them. So that's the.
So it's within the existing overlay districts. It's not within the, the entire commercial corridor. It's within the specified overlay district that's already been set.
Those areas that you identified are outside the overlay.
Know that.
Yeah.
Uh.
We can't impose a mor, we can't impose a moratorium on something that, that people would have no right to propose.
So can you, uh, so you'd have to rezone commercial districts that are subject to multifamily housing at present?
There are, there are no commercial districts that are subject to multifamily development.
Okay, good.
Other than forty B.
Other than forty B, okay. And, uh, last question is, uh, how far are you to, uh, how far is the town towards reaching the, the limits on residential construction in these districts?
When you're saying residential or are you?
Uh, multifamily, I'm sorry.
So when you say limits of, sorry, through the chair, can you clarify what you mean of limits of residential development?
You just cited that there were limits of total.
For projects?
For projects.
Not for the, the district as a whole?
Not for the district as a whole, just for the size of a project.
Correct.
So there's actually, you could squeeze in as many small projects as you want to do. And you could basically develop an entire commercial parcel.
For instance, if someone wanted to go in and tear down White City East and do a mixed-use, mixed-use project there, it's foreseeable that they could, or put multifamily. I'm not saying two hundred and fifty, but that's the kind of thing you're looking at.
Okay. So you don't?
I'm not suggesting that's on the table or.
No, no.
Discuss, but.
I just asked that because you look at Route Nine and you see the former Edgemere Drive-in.
That's Route Twenty.
That's, I'm sorry, Route Twenty. I apologize. And then you've got a couple more, uh, uh, multifamily housing developments along Route Twenty, just up the street, just east of there. And it's, there's basically, you could, you could basically build and at present, under the present zoning, you could just go the entire length of Route Nine and building multifamily housing presumably.
You can't. No, it would have to be, it would have to be mixed use and it would be special permit, so it would be up to the discretion of the board.
Or forty B.
Or forty B.
And then even then, it would be, you'd only have, you could only impose a limit of two hundred and fifty units?
They could only propose per project, two hundred and fifty units.
In the overlay.
In the overlay.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for being so patient.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item this evening? All right. Seeing none, I'd like to.
Hi, Beth Cassavan. Um, I'm here, not on behalf of the select board, but definitely can answer some of the questions that I think I heard, um, come up about what was the driving force behind this article. So I think, Chris, you did a really good job explaining, um, some of the background. Uh, we started talking about this a few months ago in a workshop in response to us being so close to reaching the forty B ten percent affordable threshold. So, um, several years ago, it became the mission of the select board to find that path to reaching that ten percent affordable so that we'd be able to kind of take back control of these commercial zones that are so precious. Uh, we only have very limited, limited space, uh, for commercial development in town. And, you know, while we know, we understand that we need the housing, sometimes that cannibalizes some of that space because it overrides the zoning. So this seems like the appropriate time to pause, uh, to take a look at the overlay districts that I think have served us extremely well over the last couple of decades. Right? We have properties now that we've talked about tonight, Market Basket, Lake Way Commons. These were underutilized parcels. Many of them were, you know, in states of disrepair. We've brought them back to the tax roll. They're productive spaces where I believe the community is really happy to see what was developed there. I know that people think the apartments overburden the schools, but we do have data that shows that there's not more than twenty or twenty-five school children coming out of those units. Right? So this seems to be the time, um, from the perspective of, of the select board, to just take that pause. We need to update our master plan. Um, we've heard from, you know, the police chief that, you know, they need more staff to keep up with our growing community. The pace has just seemed to be, um, very rapid. And, you know, it's not to say that any one board, whether it's planning board or Z B A, isn't doing what they need to do to properly manage, uh, the projects that come before them. That's not the case at all. Right? It's just the select board responding to what we're hearing in, in the community and that these corridors, specifically Route Twenty, which was not designed for, um, pedestrian access or residential communities, right? How can we stop and take a look at that and make sure that we are able to keep pace and keep it safe? Make sure that we have the water and sewer capacity that we need, make sure that we can keep up, our police, our fire can keep up with the growing, uh, community. And, and that's really the impetus behind this. Um, I definitely understand the position, you know, that I heard from both you, Julie, about the, the possible ramifications of the, the, the commercial development going elsewhere. And to your point, Mr. Rotolakis, um, I know we've talked about that, looking at it. about that, looking at a, at a zoning, um, change that could reduce the number of special permits required in the commercial industrial zone. And I think that's something that would go part and parcel with this, and, and maybe not at the May town meeting, but perhaps once we've done the study at the, you know, at an annual town meeting a year or so down the road, to be able to expand the allowable uses, um, in the commercial industrial zone as a way to make sure that we are enticing that kind of develop, development that we do want to see. But again, this is about pausing, um, understanding what the community preferences are, and then, um, you know, hopefully coming back with something that meets the needs of our current situation. So, thanks for the opportunity to speak, and thanks for the, the work this evening.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to make a, I'd like to entertain a motion to close this public hearing this evening.
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as have it. So, at this point, I think we need to take a vote on the article, um, going forward. Um, I don't know if there's anything that we need to, we don't have a reading.
No, no. This is, so, um, the memo that was prepared, just for reference, so this is our standard memo that's provided to town meeting members that reflects, uh, the written report of your vote this evening. So, again, it's, it's written to go, uh, anyway. We would amend it, uh, according to the, uh, board's vote this evening. But, um, primarily you can find in the, the highlighted, um, uh, item, that's where we would be looking for a vote, um, either to, uh, recommend adoption or defeat of Article One. Um, the board takes that through their normal process of motion and, uh, vote, and we will reflect that and, um, issue that memo. Uh, it does provide some additional background info, um, the actual article, language, proposed motion language, and a brief description of, um, the moratorium for the town meeting members.
And this needs to be taken on a roll call? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So, um, yes-
By individual article?
There's only one article.
Well, I thought there was two.
Combined them for both districts, so it's all in one article.
Okay.
So, I'd like to entertain the, a motion to vote on, uh, sending this, or making a recommendation of this article to town meeting on December seventeenth. So, we'll start. Matt?
Aye, yes.
Dino?
Yes.
Verna?
Yes.
Steve?
Reluctantly, yes.
Tim?
I'm in favor.
And I am, a no. So, passes. And we'll go to the-
Doesn't matter what we think.
All right. So, this will be referred to town meeting.
Correct.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Discuss and vote to approve the 2026 Planning Board Calendar.
Move to approve-
Nothing has really changed on this, so I think is there a motion to approve the calendar?
Move to approve the Planning Board Calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as have it.
Um, if I may, just, in relation to that, the, the vote is fine. But, um, uh, Julie, I know we had discussed about potentially doing a workshop as well. Um, so I just wanted to take this time real, real briefly to run that by the, the board for discussion. Um, I, I'd like to, you know, probably in the August or in the summer timeframe, just do a, um, policy workshop, um, with the board, um, just kind of sitting down, seeing from the process, um, you know, what is working, what is not, and just make that an annual check-in. Um, just pretty much a health checkup, you know, are there any process adjustments that we need to, to look at, um, and just help us to kind of sit down, um, as we discuss with members, kind of what, what we're doing, um, and just do that. So, it would be outside of the regular schedule, um, but I just wanted to, um, get some feedback on that. If there's interest in doing that, um, our office would provide that, and we can provide some technical support or, um, really shape that to be what you want for a workshop. But I just wanted to pose that to the, to the board for their-
It's a good idea.
Great idea.
Makes sense.
Sure.
Uh, next-
Do you have a date in mind now, or no?
We don't. I'm, I'm tentatively thinking August, uh, given, like, the appointments. So, um, if we, so say, you know, if we're doing it annually, the idea being if we have new members, they would be at that workshop, you know, for, right before their first meeting, um, to line it up that way. So, it's kind of the idea, but we can shift it wherever.
Okay. Great. Next item on the agenda is review the Declaration of Common Driveway Easements and Covenants for 29 Hill Street Common Driveway.
Uh, yep. So, this is, uh, an item that's a, it's a requirement of the common driveways, that they provide the Declaration of Easements and Covenants. Um, 29 Hill Street has provided that documentation. There's no action needed by the board, um, just to acknowledge that it's been received, um, as required.
Okay. Great.
It's something that their buyers are going to have to, the buyers and their attorneys are going to have to find acceptable.
Correct. And, and what it is, you know, to, to review, just doing a little bit deeper dive on that, is that's, um, establishing the rights and requirements. So, common driveway snow plowing, those are common, um, concerns that we hear in terms of, um, common driveways. And so, we outline that, we require that they be outlined and provided to the board. So, if you had comments, we would provide that back to the applicant. But, um, they appear to be in order, so.
Yeah, only that the, the owners know what they're getting into, right?
Right.
Yeah. It's going to be recorded prior to-
Correct.
Yeah. In advance.
All right. Uh, next is, we have one A and R submission in front of us for 308-312 Boston Turnpike. Uh, plans have been reviewed by staff for compliance with-
Correct. Yeah. So, the, so A and R, the two items that the board can, uh, review and opine upon are access and frontage. Um, this lot, uh, has both access and frontage and is entitled to endorsement from the board.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to, um, allow for the town engineer to-
No town engineer, he'll be signing now.
Oh, somebody-
Oh, we're signing now?
He, he'll be signing. We have it, uh, here this evening.
Got the mylar? Okay.
Yep.
Um, so, do we have a motion to authorize the, to sign?
Do we all endorse the plan as proposed?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as have it. Excellent. And, uh, last item on the agenda this evening's correspondence, um, received related to 299 Hartford Turnpike.
I did want to make a brief comment of that. Um, just, you know, it's primarily as a, a notification to the board. And what I recommend in relation to that is there, uh, items outlined are primarily more around enforcement. They're the jurisdiction, I think, of the building inspector. But, um, you know, I did, it's in relation to one of the recently proposed projects, looking for a delay of some site work, but they would like to open their business. Um, again, I think that's the purview of the building inspector, and we'll work with them on that. But, um, just wanted to provide that context to the board.
Okay. Any other board?
Move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.